We are live.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for coming to the October 10, 2023 zoning committee meeting. So I'm Leo Sarli. I'm going to do some opening statements, and then we'll do roundtable introduction, and then we'll do the online introduction, and then we'll hit the meeting. So I will catch my breath. I just ran up the stairs, but I will try to get through this as quick as possible. We're holding a hybrid public meeting, which enables remote electronic participation, as the League of the Authorize Medical of Virginia, for the Planning Commission's electronic meeting policy adopted on July 7, 2022. Members of Zoko are participating both here in person and virtually through electronic meetings. This time, I'd like to orient everyone to our hybrid environment and cover a few specifics about how tonight's meeting will run. Members of the public may attend the meeting here in person or electronically by using the Microsoft Teams link provided in the Zoko webpage, the county events calendar, and the email notification sent to Zoko email subscribers. Additionally, there is a dial-in option phone for those who wish to use it or a planning commissioner joining virtually. Anyone loses internet connectivity during today's meeting. Please reconnect with us by phone. Please, please keep your phone devices muted until you're called upon. Turn off the sound of any other devices around to minimize interference. For our virtual attendees using Microsoft Teams, please turn off your video feed and keep your microphone muted as you enter the meeting and during the meeting. The Microsoft Teams meeting chat will only be used to provide instructions for virtual attendees on how to register for public comment and to field general questions about Microsoft Teams. The Teams chat will not otherwise be monitored by staff or the planning commission during the meeting, nor will it be used to collect feedback. Additional notes for our members of the public who would like to provide feedback and comment. Unlike the planning commission's regular meetings, the Zoko agenda meetings are not public hearings, they're for public comment that the Zoko chair's discretion after the committee discussion has concluded. We will have public meetings today, so if you want to sign up, please do so. Public comments can be provided by people attending in person and virtually. For in-person attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening, you may indicate on the meeting's sign-in sheet. It's on here. I'll stop that. For virtual attendees who wish to provide public comment this evening, you may indicate in the Teams chat that you would like to provide public comment, and your name will be added to the list. As a reminder, you always have the option to provide written comments via the link that is provided in the Teams chat and on Zoko's website. All written comments, whether they're paper or online, will be shared with the planning commission and posted to the Zoko page publicly. All comments received as of noon today have already been shared with Zoko. I will call for speakers at the end of the meeting, and I'll ask Mr. Rogers to let me know if we have virtual attendees who would like to provide comments. Mr. Rogers, go acknowledge speakers in the Teams chat. Please indicate that in the chat that you'd like to provide comment, and your name will be added to the list. Members of the public attending virtually will speak first, followed by in-person attendees. The virtual attendees are called upon to speak. You must unmute yourself by clicking the microphone icon that is located on the meeting command bar. Lastly, this is a public forum. Today's meeting will be reported and posted to the county website. All information associated with today's meeting, whether written or spoken, is subject to Freedom of Information Act requirement. Great. Thank you all. I will now introduce myself. I'm Leo Sarli with the Planning Commission.
Elizabeth Gere, Planning Commission.
I'm Inezus, Planning Commission.
I've been in the office, Department of Parks and Recreation.
Walter Gonzalez, Department of Parks and Recreation.
Nick Rogers, Department of Community Planning, Housing and Development.
Olivia Sontag, Department of Community Housing, Planning and Development, Planning Commission.
Andrea Goward, Fall Intern with the Council on Housing and Planning this fall.
Thank you. And then do we have, I believe, two members of the commission joining us virtually?
Daniel Weir, Planning Commission.
Daniel.
Eric Burkey, Planning Commission.
Welcome, Eric. Anyone else? I think we have one member of the public who's joined us tonight. Okay. Great. All right. With that, I think we're ready to start. What's first on our agenda again? So we have the first item is the zoning warrants amendment related to use permit modifications in public spaces. So that will be accommodation of myself, Ms. Lasik, and Mr. Gonzalez presenting that item. I'll turn things over to Arena to kick things off for us, if that's okay with you. That's great.
Thank you very much. As Nick said, you're going to be hearing from both Nick, Walter, and myself. You're going to transition between slides, and I'm going to start first. The purpose of this zoning study is to explore adding a use permit option for the county board to consider case-by-case modifications of Arlington zoning laws for public spaces to enable more flexibility for where amenities can be located in public space, avoidance of the environmentally sensitive areas, and reduction in additional parking when unnecessary or when alternatives are available. This study, if you remember, is rooted in an action step adopted in the 2019 Public Spaces Master Plan that recommended the county review and considers updating the zoning regulations related to parks and public spaces. And the PSMP specifically calls out some of the amenities, park amenities, that should be explored and considered as listed on this slide. As you can tell, the Public Spaces Master Plan has this very comprehensive, or recommend this very comprehensive overview of the zoning regulations and potential amendments. So staff approached this big and complex study as a three-phase approach. So this is how we envision it. In March of this year, the county board approved the amendments as part of the phase one of this study, and those amendments focus stormwater management, some placement of certain amenities, including park amenities, setback, reduction in setback requirements for specific park amenities, and the maximum height for fence and walls. Those are the things that we changed in March. The second phase, as I mentioned, is the really authority to approve, the county board to approve increased height, reduce setback, and reduce parking amounts on a case-by-case basis. As a phase three, which we hope we are going to be able to initiate next year, we envision a comprehensive study. This is something that the PSMP recommended, and we understand it needed to happen with possible support from consultant team to really overhaul S3A and PS regulations to see what is really not working for the public space system of the 21st century, since some of these zoning regulations, as you know, are outdated or recreated many decades ago. We hope to identify, as part of this more comprehensive study, best practices for flexible zoning standards for public spaces, and there are various topics that we are going to be considering as part of this study, and they're all based on the PSMP recommendations as well. So one thing that I think it's important to note at the beginning of this presentation is that this study is not proposing to remove or reduce any existing, already in place, extensive public engagement processes that we have of park-related projects. And we'll go a little bit more in detail on the next slide, what those park projects usually look like. But projects, park projects typically follow the county's six-step engagement guide and consist of two to three different types of engagements, and they're kind of listed here what those topics of those engagements usually are. They vary depending on their complexity. Some projects, such as, for example, Jenny Dean Park, had multiple engagements. Long Bridge Park, athletic century, if you remember, it was years and years of making and a lot of community engagement and various engagement tools. Some are more simple, and they contain two to three public engagements. So just wanted to mention that this study is not proposing to remove any of those already engagements that are already in place, but add another use permit process to this established process. Okay. So how does the use permit process fit in a typical public engagement? In certain instances, in case of, for example, new parks or where new uses are introduced in parks or significant changes in existing parks, a park master planning process is initiated. And I'll give you just a couple of examples of more recent ones. Jenny Dean Park had a master planning process, had a master plan approved by the county board. Arlington Junction Park, more recently, had a master plan approved as well. Those were either very big and complex locations such as Jenny Dean or Arlington Junction, which was a completely new park located in the county right of way, former rather. Just want to mention a couple of those. Park master planning processes are usually identified in the CIP, and they consist of three or more community engagements. As I said, it will really depend on their complexity, and they all require county board approval. After the park master plan is adopted by the county board, a park design process is initiated. Park design processes are also initiated for capital park maintenance projects that don't have a park master plan's approval. So there are certain instances of park maintenance, park maintenance projects are often related to where existing facilities are being replaced that are at the end of their normal life cycle. So so design process kicks in, and it typically includes also two or three engagements with the community. So just wanted to mention, so in certain instances, we are going to have three or plus engagements as part of park master planning, and then we're going to have two to three additional community engagements as part of the park design. And as I said, in some instances, park master planning will not be, that phase will not happen because it's just replacing the existing facilities, so we are then focusing on the park design phase. Another thing that, kind of important to mention, that use permit process really kicks in at that stage when we already have a final, close to be final, design for a park. That is typical of this scenario. In some instances, locations or height might be known from the beginning, and use permit process can be initiated early in the process, but most of the time, park design needs to be nearing completion for the use permit process to be initiated, because we really need for a use permit, for a use permit such as the one that we are proposing as part of this study, we really need to know the location of amenities, we need to know the height of structures in order to even apply for a use permit. So that is usually when that kind of design process is nearing a new completion. After that phase, and some examples are listed here, when we are, for example, for the replacement of existing athletic field lighting in the case of the study that we are proposing, or any amenity and feature that is located in the setback that exceed the requirements currently allowed by zoning. After we get approval for the use permit, as part of this, we would go through the permitting. Permitting review basically consists of a lot of reviewers, but among others, zoning staff reviews all the applications that go for permitting for the compliance with the zoning ordinance. So this is kind of an important internal step that needs to happen, and without that approval, we cannot go to the county board without a permit in hand. We cannot go to the county board for the approval of the contract. And the approval of the contract is needed because that is the contract that's needed for any park construction in the future. So kind of explaining this long, long engagement timeline where there are all these different steps that are really needed to happen, both on the engagement side and internal staff side for the project to, park project to be basically constructed or the final stage to happen. And obviously, there are other things that might need to happen, such as block amendments, rezoning. There are different phases that could kind of interfere with this whole process, but there might be easements or agreements that are needed after we get a contract approved and even after construction is started. But kind of broadly, this is how the typical process works. And I'll pause here with the engagement and turn it over to Nick.
So so Arena's sort of given the state of play and the important policy foundations, and we wanted to take that extra time to inform the commission and the members of the public on the numerous steps that APR takes in any public process with improvements in a public space, zeroing in on some of the needs and how to implement those recommendations in the PSMP. A lot of the inspiration for this, what we're calling this phase two work, comes from the adjustments in the zoning that the board adopted in 2016 to the benefit of APS. At the time, there were several school construction projects that were coming into the pipeline, into design phase. Issues related to parking, capacity, meeting, enrollment demands were in the forefront of APS's needs, and as those projects were coming through the development review, community review, their identification was made by staff that the bulk and the expands and the ideal designs that were being brokered with that community consensus were going to violate the zoning ordinance. And so after evaluating a couple of different alternatives of, you know, do we, do we rezone the property? Do we go through a protracted zoning study, determine what's the best optimum standards for the school system? The board ended up going with a more tailored approach to utilize the use permit process, use permits are already required for public schools, but to allow modification authority for certain standards related to height, setbacks, density, and parking with that 2016 action. So so that's kind of the inspiration. I do want to spend just a little bit of time talking about use permits themselves. Obviously, the planning commission doesn't review use permits. Those are applied by, or by the applicant. They go straight to the county board, and usually they fall in one of two categories, particular land uses that are desirable here in Arlington, but if located in certain spots may have undue or adverse land use impacts on the surrounding community, surrounding neighbors, the transportation network perhaps. Some of the more common use permit reviews that our staff handles are for things like childcare centers. The DJ in the center there is live entertainment use, that when a restaurant is adding live entertainment to its, you know, suite of offerings for members of the public, even capital bike share stations, they require a use permit. Those all get reviewed by, for staff and then are placed on the county board's agenda for public hearing. I've also mentioned how the use permit process can be used to modify certain standards. So I've mentioned schools already, but also outdoor cafes. The board often reviews requests for alternative hours of operation or the opportunity to use piped-in entertainment in a difference, hours of operation during the review of, during the duration of an outdoor cafe. Sorry about moving over my words there. So so use permits require a public hearing. They are often placed on the board's consent agenda. The staff does contact the civic association. There is public engagement that's involved. We post the application materials on the website. We did document the community outreach that does occur with use permits in our staff memo that was posted to Zoko's website. So I think with that point, Walter, I'm going to turn over to you to kind of bring us back to the public space system itself.
You may ask yourself, why do we need flexibility in zoning? The zoning standards control the placement dimensions of structures. Public spaces have largely remained unchanged since the 20th century. As you will see in the upcoming examples, zoning regulates various aspects of park design to determine where amenities can be located, how tall they are, et cetera. Over the last decades, our own park system communities, community have been evolving. Parks area are achieving important community goals such as providing spaces for recreation, natural vegetation, trees, outdoor use spaces, but also stormwater management, other environmental benefits. It is important to note that 46% of the county-owned parks are less than two acres, so we are asking parks to provide a lot of benefits on the space. Flexibility on zoning standards are occasionally needed to make sure that parks can be designed to provide these various benefits. There are also other factors that necessitate evaluation of zoning regulations, including historical park development, amount of footages, equity, population growth, and emerging trends in parks. As mentioned earlier, we are now currently on the phase two approach. After examining several public space projects that have been completed in recent years and considering how zoning flexibility could be helpful for the development and planning of future projects, staff landed at three main areas to examine the zoning study. One is increased height. Height requirements still allow for taller structures. Reduced setbacks still allow for structures to be located closer to the street, particularly helpful for smaller sites or sites located in urban corridors. Parking flexibility to avoid unnecessarily adding parking to a park when the existing space can be used for more desired purpose. We've also identified, also identified a couple of regulations in the sign code modified to enable better wayfinding identification in the county's public spaces.
So as we mentioned in the Zoko memo in your report for this evening, the county's public space system is not exempt or excluded from zoning requirements. And so, for example, most of our public spaces are zoned mostly as the S3A district. Sometimes they're in the PS district, and the slide shows the maximum height that anything that's affixed to the ground can reach in those, in those zones. And so that can be a building, it could be field lighting, it could be the play equipment as well. Anything that's affixed to a ground has to meet a maximum height requirement. Whereas that's 45 feet in S3A, there is a provision that allows for rooftop appurtenances and other mechanical equipment to extend slightly higher than that, up to 68 feet. But but this is an area where if the, if the feature needed through the design process, through the master planning process to be taller, those numbers that are on the slide, those are, those are absolutes. So unlike with the site plan process where the board has modification authority to approve alternatives to what's in the zoning, these are, as of, as of right now, these are absolute maximes. And Walter's got some examples where we've ran into some, some challenges with that in the past.
As we've mentioned, all you may be familiar with Jenny Dean, which extends a public engagement process during the master planning process. After reaching the final design, the park was initially zoned M1 S3A, then had to be rezoned to a PS district. And this was done after reaching a final design that proposed park improvements included 75-plus above height of athletic field lights. Current lighting technology trends show that higher light poles help angle the light more accurately, reducing the lights below average glare just around neighborhoods. The S3A zoning district allows for a maximum height up to 68 feet, making the zoning regulations too restrictive to accommodate the proposed height of athletic field lights for Jenny Dean Park. To ensure that the community vision for Jenny Dean Park was achieved, Jenny Dean Park would rezone from the M1 S3A district to the PS district to facilitate the installation of athletic field lighting as a PS district gave greater flexibility in height.
So this, the second area of regulations that we're focusing in are setback requirements. Obviously, those requirements, the purpose and intent of those generally are to allow for orderly spacing between improvements on individual lots to prevent crowding and what have you. And so whereas that allows for that orderly spacing, say, in a residential neighborhood with single detached dwellings, houses, they're particularly for the smaller sites. On a, on a large site of 30, 40 acres, you know, setback flexibility probably wouldn't be essential. But for some of the smaller sites, like you'll, you'll see in the slides, you know, pinching down on some of those setbacks, particularly on the street front, a street setback of 25 feet or 50 feet from the center line, whichever is greater, you can really start to pinch in and really minimize the area that, that public space improvements can be established on, on a given park site. Now, with the board's adoption of flexibility earlier this year, things like the bike rack, the play equipment, those types of accessory features, those can go into the setback, but there may be instances where, for example, a restroom building or, or another type of building, it, it may warrant encroaching particularly into a, a street setback, understanding the sensitivities that would be necessary and essential next to an adjacent residential neighborhood, for, for example. I think we'll talk about Bailey's Branch Park.
And as Nick mentioned, some of the parks we come across are narrow and present some design challenges once we start getting into the planning. Bailey's Branch, this is a narrow linear two-acre park situated in the Columbia Forest neighborhood, and in the near future, we'll be starting a design process. There's a couple of things on the map that I want to call out. It's a, it's a lot of things going on at once. You can see here in the blue, this is the RPA area within the park. As you can see, the park is bounded, half is in one RPA, and on the other corner of Columbia Street, there's another RPA. Yellow line is the street center line. The green is the property line. The orange line is the 25-foot setback from the property line. And the magenta dashed line is the 50-foot setback from the center of the line right of way. You can see in the bottom left corner, there's a view of Bailey's Branch Park. Some of the constraints of the park are that it's narrow, linear, it's in a resource protection area, there are topographical challenges, it's heavily forested, and the current S3A setbacks would hinder any future improvements to the park, as you can see on the map. That's pretty much the space you're left with once you have to apply the front street setbacks, and that tends to be an issue that we run across a lot of our parks, especially in the more urban corridors, given that they're all street lighting. Another example of that is currently being designed is Upper Blumont conceptual design. It's a current project that is going, that is prosa redesign of the Upper Blumont tennis courts. After a long-year meeting process, the community expressed a desire to reconfigure and relocating the tennis courts outside of the resource protection area, pulling them closer to Manchester Street. And just to call out here, the, the area in red over here, this concept and plan is the RPA, as you can see, the courts have been pulled further outside of RPA, are now closer to the North Manchester Street. Upper Blumont's design issues are that the courts and lighting poles for the courts encroach into setbacks. This was done to pull them outside of the RPA as possible, pull them as much outside of the RPA as possible. In the next slide, you will see lighting poles have been placed inside the setback of that area. Here in this exhibit, you can see the setback exhibit regarding the proposed conceptual redesign of Upper Blumont Park. The same setback requirements for the S3A apply here on this site, larger than either 50 feet from said center line of any street or 25 from any street right of way. As shown in the exhibit, you can see the property line in red, the RPA boundary in green, and the setback lines and location of the poles. As you can see in the exhibit, there are three poles circled in purple, one here, here and here. These three poles would fall within the setback, and this is a common issue we run into. Location of these poles makes sense, given the layout of the courts and help eliminate, eliminate the playing courts within the park boundaries.
Yeah. And, and so the last area of regulations that we see a lot of potential for some, some case-by-case modification would be for parking. So so again, public space features, certain public space features like sport courts, outdoor play fields, as well as, those are, as well as tennis courts have a parking requirement in the zoning ordinance in Article 14. And so again, for, for a facility like, a location like Upper Blumont, that's a known destination for tennis, 68 parking spaces being provided there. Again, going back to the more smaller parks, like the three that we have here, these are areas that DPR is, is going to begin sort of the early stages of some, some master planning, yes, actual master planning of what sorts of amenities could be serving the community in these locations. If, based on community feedback and input, either some sort of active recreation use, again, like a, like a sport court or some sort, those parking requirements need to be met on-site. The parking, obviously, is adding impervious surface to the site, which is going to require stormwater management solutions. And so particularly for the smaller sites, there could be a need and could warrant some sort of flexibility in, in meeting or potentially even waiving those parking requirements, again, with community buy-in involved and with other alternative means to provide it, whether there's a, if, if we can, if the staff can demonstrate, for example, there's a plethora of, of on-street parking that's readily available nearby, number one. Are there bike facilities? Are there public transit facilities that are, that are options as, as well? The case would still need to be made as part of the use permit process, but, but right now, there, again, it's an absolute requirement. Parking must be provided. It must be provided on-site. Walter mentioned some of the sign standards as well. I'll highlight two areas. Peculiarly, the sign code requires a flag pole to be located no more than 30 feet from the, what's entitled as the principal entrance of a building. And so if, if a park has no building, well, then where do you put the, the flag pole? It creates this sort of quandary requiring an interpretation of the zoning administrator. So not really seeing a, an essential public benefit and essential purpose and intent of that. The, the flag pole, which is, they have flagged signs, they're regulated in the sign code, there's a maximum height, there's a setback, but that, this, this requirement to be near a, a main entrance of a building, we just see a lot of, we don't see a reason for that to continue, and that would provide some flexibility for DPR. And then again, with the freestanding signs, this is, this isn't actually, this is a good example of where we see freestanding sign, but not as good of an example of when, particularly when, when DPR is trying to identify a location, oftentimes that identification is most essential in our more urbanized areas where the park may be within or adjacent to a site that's subject to an area plan, a sector plan. Most of our area or sector plans call for wider pedestrian walkways, sometimes upwards of 12 to 14 feet. And so if you're, if you're on a bike or if you're walking by, you have a wide sidewalk plus an additional 10 feet to try to find that, that sign, we see a lot of, a lot of benefits of pulling. an additional 10 feet to try to find that sign, we see a lot of benefits of pulling that right to the back of the sidewalk as opposed to requiring an additional 5 feet or an additional 10 feet. Again, most, not as essential on the larger sites, but a real space saver for a smaller park. So we are, rather than going through the process of a use permit modification, a staff report solely for a sign, we've taken the extra step where we see a lot of benefit of just making a direct change to the zoning ordinance in that regard. And as we wrap up, we want to make sure that we document some of the engagement that's been done to date and some of the engagement that will continue to occur on this study. This is a study that is part of the broader public space master plan implementation that Mr. Cusarelli identified in his presentation to the board as part of the budget hearings earlier this year. So this is in our work plan. We've been conducting intentional outreach with the community through our website as well as an online feedback forum that closed just this past Sunday. We did host a virtual Q and A, an info session with members of the public that was moderated by DPR and CPHD communication staff. We, unfortunately, we had less than 10 members of the public show up, but we did have a robust engagement and conversation with the folks who did attend. And then as far as the online feedback that we received, we did receive over 200 responses. So my understanding is that's pretty good for a scope and scale of a study like this. We do feel that the engagement has been, based on the relative scale and scope of what's being proposed, we do feel that the public engagement does scale with the nature and scope of the study and the recommendations that we were bringing for you for review tonight. But that being said, most of the, a majority of the participants in asked to gauge their level of comfort, most of them, for, most of them explained, indicated that they were either somewhat uncomfortable or very uncomfortable with the county board having this type of modification authority to make these type of adjustments to height and setbacks in parking. The least amount of discomfort was with the potential relocation of a sign, and the most amount of discomfort was with reducing parking, with making modifications to the parking requirements. There are over 200 comments. What we plan to do is, again, we just got this data yesterday, so what we're planning to do is to come up with a more fulsome appendix with the staff report that goes to the board's RTA, currently scheduled for November. That attachment with all of those comments would be in your public hearing report when the planning commission sees this in full, currently scheduled for December. So all of the comments that were received will be provided to the board and will be provided to you as well. Some of the general themes, just going through and seeing some of the more common themes, it's not here on the slide, but a, and something that we see and our other counterparts in other jurisdictions, we are in an era of a lack of distrust with all levels of government, with the county, with county staff, and you see a lot of that anxiety, you see a lot of that nervousness and that concern coming through in the comments. Will the community be involved? Will the community have a say in these public space processes? Which is why we took that time earlier to explain that to you tonight. Also, particularly with specific concerns related to lighting, not wanting to have any sort of intrusive glare from an athletic court or an athletic field coming into a residential neighborhood, concerns about the amount of open space, concerns that modification authority could be utilized to overdevelop parks, to minimize the amount of green space, to minimize mature natural resources, tree canopy as well, a lot of caution and a lot of apprehension in that regard. And parking, some very helpful comments on that. In some scenarios, that parking is essential for folks with mobility needs, for the street hockey team that is hauling in all of their equipment. And so parking cannot necessarily, according to the folks who participated, cannot necessarily be categorically zeroed out in all instances. So a lot of good feedback, and we appreciate receiving all of that. And just because the online feedback forum has closed, we'll still, you know, Walter and my contact information is on the website, we'll still continue to provide that feedback to you and the members of the board as well. We do have a briefing lined up with the Public Space Master Plans Implementation Advisory Committee in early November. We still are on track to have this before the board for a request to advertise in November. And then this would be before you and the board for full public hearings in December. Oh, I mentioned, I glossed over the sports commission. Sports commission will be in a couple of weeks on October 26th. We plan to give a version of this briefing to them as well. I think we've spoken enough. We'd love to entertain yours and our commissioners who are joining virtually, question and feedback.
Great. Thank you very much, Arina, and Nick, same here.
And Walter. I got it, I made it just in time. Thanks, Walter. All right, so this now is with the commission or the committee. So, you said you had a question?
I do, I have some comments. And so first of all, I'm really happy to see this. I actually participated in the PFRC for the Discovery Elementary School that I think precipitated a lot of this discussion about the heights and the lighting, so I want to say something about that. And then, of course, I led the planning for Jenny Dean Park, so it's really great to see this too. So let me do the easy thing first. I would be much more comfortable with the zoning ordinance proposed language changes for parking if they actually said to reduce parking, not just modify. I know right now, we're all in favor of reducing parking, but should our board membership change or planning commission change, I'd feel more comfortable if the language was specifically giving the board authority to reduce the parking as opposed to just modify it. So I don't know if we're going to be, I mean, I'm curious what others think. I think with Jenny Dean, we actually talked about some spaces that were short-term, specifically for loading and unloading, recognizing that that area was really tough to find more parking outside, but we could start accommodating where we see the needs are. Okay, the second one's a little bit longer, but I think it's important to get this on the record because I think this predates everyone here except me. So the big issue with the lighting at Discovery is not exactly addressed by what's being proposed here, although this is a very, as typical with your department, this is a really great way that you've addressed it. I worry that we don't always meet the people who feel like they want to be part of the discussion, and that's where we get this pushback about distrust and not having comfort with the board. So just to, like, go back in time, oh, wow, maybe, what is it, 10 or 12 years now? I mean, it's a long time ago, when they started this. But what happened was the SPRC, the PFRC around the new elementary school for the site located on the Williamsburg grounds, you know, APS grounds, and this was chaired by Inchen Charlie a long time ago, the community was very, very concerned about lighting. And they'd asked all throughout that process, is there going to be lighting? And John Chadwick, who was superintendent at that time, kept saying APS does not have money to light this. Those were his specific words. However, when this came for approval before the board, and we had a different county manager then, they pulled out a piece of paper that said, oh, someone else is going to pay for the lighting. And the few people who had followed it to that point, thinking, oh, we're not going to get lighting, were horribly surprised. The county manager said, I don't know why you're surprised, I've had this letter for almost a year. So this distrust runs very deep and it's very specific to processes that people put a lot of faith in, and it was all about the lighting. They kept asking about the lighting, and I think that, as with most things, when we discuss something about which people don't agree, the opportunity to be heard goes a long way towards moving forward, whether or not everybody gets everything they want out of the process. But I think it's really important to know that because you've put so many good ideas in here with regard to how do we make sure we're reaching the right people who want to participate in this discussion? And sometimes I think our traditional means might not reach those folks. Obviously, you might think about reaching out to the most recent PFRC or SPRC, like just make sure those folks know this is an opportunity. Since we're not sending anything by certified mail, this is just more staff time at not a greater expense, but I think it shows that we've gone that extra mile on it. And I think also people did not realize, although they started to with Jenny Dean, taller poles gives us more directed lighting. I think folks just don't always understand how much time and effort goes into specing out all the tech aspects of these things. And now, we are hearing what the community is saying. Okay, so that was my long comment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That's great.
Yeah, great.
Do you want to say anything, Tim?
I do. So I have a few questions that I wrote down. So if you are doing a lot of these amendments by use permit, which is going to happen later in the process, does that make planning harder earlier because you won't know what is going to be approved, or do you kind of have an idea of what's going to be approved? Is this going to be precedent-based on what amendments go through?
I mean, I would say it really, this is not a good answer, but it will depend, depending on the project. So I believe sometimes, there will be instances, and for example, if it's a field lighting, I think that if it's an existing field and we know we're not going to be changing a lot, we are currently proposing, as Nick mentioned, and I think you mentioned throughout the presentation, only to include, only include flexibility for athletic field lighting where lighting is already available, I mean, existing on the field. So we're not talking about opening up conversation about new lighting, that is a separate process that in the future hopefully we'll have at some point, but we are not, we're not proposing something like that right now. So when there is an existing lighting on a field and we know we're not changing a field itself, configuration of the field along that, most of the time, we would know where location of the lighting would be, so we could initiate the process early if that is the only thing that we know will be requested the county board to modify. So I can see that maybe being done earlier in the process. For all the other things, such as setback requirements, placement of the amenities, then it's so uncertain until almost the end of the design process, there are a lot of things that impact our design up to almost the end of the conceptual design or even the final design when we start the permitting process, because there are things on the storm of the management we need to change. There are just things in the design and calculation that are done later in the process when we have engineering plans done and all that. So depending on uncertainty would probably be often in our project. But it's not, I don't think it's, it will be adding extra layer in our process, it will be adding certain time. I don't know, Nick, how long usually sprint processes are done, but for several months of process, it may sometimes add that timeline. I'm not, I don't anticipate that these are going to happen often. We really don't think that this use permit modification option will be used that often in park-related projects. As Nick said, with our recent amendments in March, I believe that we kind of fixed some of those issues that we had very often, where do you place a playground? You have to find, you know.
Shade structure.
Shade structures.
That was a big one.
Bailey's Branch is a great example because we know it's an NC project, so we kind of know what the community wants because their, the community wants a playground there. If we did not have that study done in March, we wouldn't be able to place, you saw how much limitations we have in the park, and Walter explained that it's a topography issue, it's just like, oh, you saw those lines, literally the only place where we would be able to put a playground was like within that last pink line or whatever the color was. Currently, we can, now we can do that, but there are still some, some other parts we're going to have limitations where we won't be able to have, for example, tall fence or athletic field court. So in certain instances, those are going to be unknown, where the exact location would be. And that is an important information for even CPHD or zoning staff to even review our planning staff to review our use permit application. So we would need to know, we would need to have at least a really, really good sense of where the amenities would be located and the height of the amenity proposed amenities and all that.
Okay. I also had a question about, in the report for tonight's meeting, it defines the term public space as public parks that are operated by DPR. In our SPRC process, we defer, define public space to be much broader, and it could be something owned by an applicant that they're letting us use. Maybe DPR operates that space sometimes and sometimes they don't, so can this process only be used by DPR and APS or just DPR or any space defined by public space?
So I'll start, and certainly it was not our intention to categorize the privately-owned public spaces as not part of our public space. I know that they're catalogued and reported as such, so the public features, those plazas and things that you're seeing through SPRC, we certainly, those count as part of the system. That being said, as you know and as members of the public, hopefully we'll learn as we continue this process, the site plan process and the wide latitude that the board has through site plan already gives the much more flexibility than what's being proposed and considered here with this item. So, number one. Number two, in most instances, those zoning districts are not S3A. And so we feel that the established procedures and the established regulations that are applicable to the privately-owned public spaces that are usually a community benefit coming through the site plan, there's already that flexibility, there's obviously the richness in the community engagement with that process. This is bringing some of that toolkit, a small bit of that toolkit into the rest of the public space system, which we do see some benefits, first, some case-by-case flexibility for.
Do you have more questions?
No, 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 no one else.
Okay. So in the past, we've seen limitations because of these zoning goals. You all just switched zoning from S3A to PS. Why is this a better option than that?
If I may, Commissioner Peterson, that's not the only option. And I would ask Arina and Walter to add some others. I tongue-in-cheat mentioned the shade structure because I know that, I believe, as part of the master planning process, or at least the public engagement processes for Powhatan Springs Park, for the skate park there, there were shade structures that were designed, purchased, and ready to go right in a setback. And so when permits were meant to be pulled for that, you know, the zoning staff, hopefully politely and professionally, informed our colleagues on the fourth floor that those are illegal, that those would violate the zoning ordinance. Again, the March, so this is an example that's not entirely applicable for tonight because those types of amenities can now go into the setback with the action that the board took in March. But what, another alternative course of action is to not install the feature, to not do the thing that was part of the original design. Arina, I'm sure you've got some others.
I mean, there are various, we often find ourselves in situations like that. Sometimes we decide at the end to change the design and we have to go back to the community explaining why their vision is just not, not going to happen because we just can't do it. There are instances, those are rare instances because we tried to figure that out during the design process. But I think that your question, why this is a better option, the purpose of S3A district ideally, and I know our zoning is not that clear, and I think this is something that we really want to address at the second, third phase of this study, more comprehensive phase, to actually better understand the purpose of differences between those districts such as S3A and PS district. PS district in the zoning is not always, but, and Nick correct me if I'm wrong, but it's usually for public facilities. So those are those big trade center, for example, those county facilities, DS or DPR-related facilities in a county. And S3A district is for park recreational, open space type of uses. There, as I said, the definition of those two districts is not that clear, so you can't really, that's why we can use either or. But I think some of the feedback that we even received from some of the planning commissioners in the past, when we brought some of these rezoning applications, they told us very clearly, we don't really, we don't want you to rezon stuff, you have to fix zoning. The zoning is not working, obviously, if you're bringing us applications for rezoning to another district. So S3A district for parks should really be working for parks, so we shouldn't be, we shouldn't often have to ask a planning commission to support those requests. So I think that is our, this is our attempt to not completely fixing or figuring out the actual regulations, but introducing a process that would allow us more flexibility, allow the county board.
That it? Keep going.
Okay, two other questions, but they're related. So the flag pole and the freestanding signs, can you go over again what the change would be? Are we saying no flag pole would be required or that it should be, it could be in a different place?
It can go in a different place. It doesn't have to be within 30 feet of the main entrance of the building. It can be 31 feet or 32 feet. Yeah. So that's really the only change on the flag pole. And as for the freestanding sign, again, this is, I believe the maximum, the maximum sign area for this is, you know, you only get one, and it's intended to be the main identifier for the park. The maximum sign area is something along the lines of 60 square feet. The idea is- The idea is that rather than, we feel somewhat arbitrarily setting that back 10 feet away from the sidewalk, that, that could be right at the back of the sidewalk, so that passersby, motorists, members of the public can clearly see that, and, you know, DPR has brought up first responders, if, if a service call is needed, that they know that, yes, this is where that park is. So, so rather than the 10 feet from the sidewalk or five feet from the property line, the, the sign could be located in a more visible location. You said you had two.
Well, no, it was flagpole and sign.
Oh, all right. Making sure. Great. I will take a minute to talk, make sure, oh, we have a hand up. I will let Mr. Burkey speak first.
I will be brief, Mr. Chair.
Oh, digger.
I just want to associate, I want to associate myself with the comments made by Commissioner Garen, and I really appreciate her explanation of the background of how we got here. Commissioner Garen had posed a question about parking, whether we'd want to restrict the county board's ability to modify parking or just simply reduce it. I don't know that I personally would be in favor of restricting the county board either way, although I personally would prefer less parking, but I don't know that I feel that strongly about it either. But I'm generally just very supportive of the work here. This seems like a very sensible approach in reaction to some recent developments, and I think even given the changing makeup of the county board, I think it's perfectly reasonable to, to, to pursue this course. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Burkey. All right, I will make some comments then. So my first comment, and I will channel a little bit the previous commissioners you mentioned. You know, the reason you have to use use permit, right, is because obviously there's a lacuna, or, let's use the toolbox analogy, right? Like, we don't have the right tool. So we go out and we meld and forward to a special tool for that use. Or, you know, in case of certain applicants wanting to ask for things that the community clearly did not want, right? That's the other sort of less palatable possibility. With parks, I imagine it's really the, the, the first one, where we don't have the tool to do something. So I'm investing a lot of emotional stock, and I will be around and will follow closely phase three, because that's really, I think, the solution that we ought to have. Phase two, I'm trading as a Band-Aid, which brings me to my question. Is there a sunset to the use permit aspect of this? Once we have zoning, that essentially, you know, if it's well written, we don't have to have a use permit, because it allows everything we possibly want to do, and it, you know, creates, I hate the word flexibility, as I mentioned, because, you know, again, if you need flexibility, it's because the zoning hasn't done, right, what it needed to do, right? So it's, it's brittle, it's stiff, and thus, why we need the flexibility. If it's a good zoning ordinance, it's well written, and therefore, it incorporates what the community wants to do. Again, phase three, I get it. But will there be some sort of a sunset, some sort of like, we don't need the use permit anymore once phase three is done? Or is that just something that we're just going to leave on the books? Yeah. I think my initial thoughts, Commissioner Starley, are that as part of the phase three work, that the, that if, again, if the board were to act on a, a version of the text that we have drafted for your consideration, if the board were to keep the schedule that we've anticipated and adopt similar edits in, in December, I think a, a reevaluation of, of such a tool is, is a clear and present need for phase three. In, in some, some philosophical conversations that myself and Arena and Walter and others have had, there could be some merit in keeping that tool in the toolbox for some sort of unforeseen circumstance, even in instances where, where zoning has been updated, modernized, upgraded, and more attenuated to the policies in the PSMP. I think, I think the tool should be, should be still, I think, I think it should be studied and, and continue to be valued to see, is this something that, that is still essential? 25 square miles, none of us have a hyper geometric calculator to, to consider all of the potential, you know, possibilities for, for, you know, zoning flex, flexibility. So parks come in all, all different shapes and sizes, and so it's, it's, yes, we need good standards, but then there, there also can be a case made for, for that tool when and it's needed. So it's, it's hard, it's, it's a hard conversation to sort of parse out in black and white terms. No, and I appreciate that very much. I think, I think, you know, when we get to the conversation, I would be interested in looking at something like even our, our special bluff, right? There's, there's a process.
Yeah.
triggers that. Perhaps we can put a little bit of a, of a check, you know, on the use permit. Again, you know, there's nothing wrong with it, it's just that, you know, if our zoning is failing, that's the first thing we need to look at, right? Which it is. So fair enough, we need to fix that, and it looks like we're going to do it. But then if we need this special tool, right, let's be a little bit methodical. And I said the same thing about the special bluff, you know, that like, we shouldn't be special bluffing, right? We only do it because some very extreme situation developed. So I'd love to have the same sort of attitude towards this. I'm going to react to parking a little bit, and again, I'm probably talking more to phase three than the current situation, but I agree with Commissioner Garen's reduce comment. And, and the issue there is, again, I'm always seeing a trade off, right? If you're parking something, it's not a park. Right? Like, if, if you're housing a car, you're not housing a human, right? Like, so you're constantly trading off money, resources, and real estate in our case. So that's why for me, parking is a little bit of a schtick, right? And then I think we can design some sort of guidelines around sort of the type of park that would merit parking, right? Like, I think we mentioned that a lot of our parks are two acres or less, and a lot of those are not destination parks, they're neighborhood parks, which I think is a pretty reasonable statement to say that parking requirement should be much fewer, if I use that correctly, or if any, right? Again, if it's like a hockey rink, someone mentioned, like, I get it, different use, right? You'd have to drive there. So I think parking needs to be a little bit more nuanced, so that we're not sort of trying to blanket the whole thing. And I don't know where that line can be drawn, but that would be a fun conversation to have on phase three.
Well, I have a follow on question about that, because like Bailey's Branch doesn't, I mean, it has a little bit of street parking, right? But it doesn't have a parking lot, whereas the Longbridge Aquatic Center, I mean, that seems like it would need a lot of spots, because it's nowhere near metro. It's used as a space for people to gather for, you know, marathon, I think, use that area. So anyway, so that seems like it needs a lot of parking, but Bailey's Branch wouldn't need any, so how do, I guess I don't know what the guidelines are for a park, are, what are the minimums, how do they decide those?
The, the minimum number of parking spaces required?
Yeah.
It's in the zoning ordinance. So if we can, if we can go back to that slide, there, there's a minimum requirement based on the square footage of indoor or outdoor recreation area. So, so the, the play area of the soccer field, that, it would, there would, you would calculate a formula based on that square footage, that's the amount of parking that, that would be required. So pools are one per 40 square feet of pool area, completely random, might I add. Athletic or health clubs is one space per 50 square feet of gross floor area. Indoor or outdoor recreation is one space per 300 square feet of indoor floor area and outdoor. Tennis, racquetballs, and cornball, three spaces per court. And community centers is one space per three seats. Let's say you're having roller skating night. I'll just give you.
And lower runs parking is underground. Yes. And so you just, the county just decided to pay for that, whereas usually, APS generally can't afford low ground parking.
Oh, they can.
They just don't.
They did.
Okay, but not with the rear center.
Roslin, at the height.
Okay, okay, thank you. That was a big one.
Well, it's semi-underground, right? This was the whole issue, they're sort of, that's where they did a use permit change.
Yeah.
Zone. Sorry. No, that's, that's okay. Is that, I mean, I, I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Chair, some, I'm hearing some, what I'm hearing is, is sort of an, an understanding of a, a need to be very judicious with modifying, reducing parking for the smaller spaces, and I, I think you were asking us at a minimum with phase three to consider, should there be some sort of qualifier, like for parks only under, you know, no more than two acres or something along those lines? I think I was hearing you asked us to consider some sort of qualifier, if not for this study, certainly at a minimum for phase three. Yeah. We just get to do that. Greater granularity, right? When you're talking about parking, instead of just having these like 40 square feet, right? Like, okay, perhaps, but if it's like a 300 square foot little pocket park, you have to provide, you do the math, like. Keep in mind, the zoning ordinance also requires you to round up, so if the formula comes out to 2.6 parking spaces, then you need to build three parking spaces. Right. Or 2.05, right? If it's 2.05, then it's three, yeah, you, you always have to round up. You can't round down, you always have to round up. So I think, you know, that's a situation where I think we can nuance this a little bit more, so we, we, we don't just say square footage, but we say also use and the type of parking. But again, this is a phase three conversation.
I think I just want to go on the record and note that we have, in fact, over the last few years, lost space at parks for parking, and that's definitely at Fleet, even though that was parking on which the school was built, that was parking, that was associated with the park. And also at Ham, we lost park space, because the school was reconfigured in a way to allow greater auto access through it. We lost park space. So we have a history of doing that within all of our memories. We may have lost some at Abingdon, too, when they redid the elementary school, and I know they lost open space at McKinley with some parking. They actually had trees planted in the parking lot and pulled those out at that park. I mean, like, so we do some cuckoo things, because we're, not everybody's talking to each other, so it is wise to have this conversation and not assume that we all see this the same way.
And then, let's see, any hands? Emily?
I'm supportive of if we're near metro, or there's street parking, reducing the parking requirement.
Yes, what did we just do with Boston Pond? There's no parking associated with that, but we've acknowledged that's a place people are welcome to go to, and so I think we're learning that as we become more of an urban jurisdiction, we have to acknowledge that and make some changes as well.
I'll, I'll point out one other thing, that in some of the draft language for consideration, some of the board's findings get to this, you know, is, is the park within proximity to public transit? Is there a documented, you know, plethora of an oversupply of on-street parking? A lot of areas, there isn't going to be an oversupply of on-street parking, but in some places, there, there might be. If there is, can that be factored into the consideration? Some of what the commission is talking about is, is encapsulated in some of the drafts before you tonight. Right. And I just want to associate myself with Commissioner Garen's comment about lights, and that I think there's this sort of fear that the higher they go, it's exponentially wider, and, and I think we just need to educate the public that that is not necessarily the case. Height equals more focused, you know, perhaps, or something, it's a talking point that we can spread. I think that's really a key sort of reservation that our neighbors have about the lights and the height and all that, so a little bit of education will happen. So, so Mr. Chair, I know that there is a member of the public who's indicated that they would be interested in providing some, some public comment to you on, on this topic. So I know usually you reserve to the end of the meeting, your public comment. It could be prudent to allow that at this moment. Yeah, I think that, what do you think? That's a good idea, right?
I think that's a good idea, because I think it's for this topic.
Yeah. So let's allow two minutes, and then we'll wrap up this conversation. But before we do, just checking, no hands up, no other comments? Not that, not that I see. Everybody said everything they needed to say. All right, let's go to public comments then. All right, Mr. Seymour.
Hi.
Hi.
Am I off mute?
You are off mute. We can hear you loud and clear.
I submitted written comments that Nick was nice enough to circulate, even though I think I missed the noon deadline for submitting comments, and I thank him for doing that. Let me try to summarize them in a minute or so. My comments, I think, are self-explanatory, at least I hope they are. They go largely to the process, not so much the merits. I think we all know that zoning reform has been pending for a long time, really since the public spaces master plan was approved years ago. But this proposal was unveiled basically two weeks ago to the public without the staff memo and without the ordinance. It's a very, very robust and broad proposal, and deals with lots of contentious zoning issues, issues that have, that have been at the heart of many deep and difficult urban planning debates here in Arlington and elsewhere for years. Yet, the request for appetizing apparently is scheduled for November with a county board hearing hoped for in December. That seems to me awfully, awfully fast, and, and frankly, a reprise of 2016, which, which I also lived through. That was a very similar staff proposal to, to make a bunch of changes to zoning regulations dealing with setbacks and heights and, and lights in S8, S3A zones subject to use permits. And members of the public, including me, said that the few months set aside for public engagement were too short, and the proposal was very broad, and the, the staff, to its credit, narrowed the proposal significantly and also extended and made more robust the, the public engagement effort. I thought that was a good idea then, and again, since this is really quite, quite an extensive revision of, of, of a lot of different zoning regulations, it seems like it's something that the staff would want to consider again. I raised the question as well, that I heard other trades about why.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Seymour. Your two minutes are up, but I think, I think those are great comments, and we will consider them as we go forward.
Thank you.
All right. I think that we gave you guys enough feedback. Do you feel like you have a good sense? I think so. Okay. Well, thank you very much for the presentation, for the great discussion, and I am really looking forward to phase three. Phase three. So it goes in. All right. With that, I guess I'll turn it over to you, Thomas. Pat?
Thank you.
Thanks, Arena. Thanks, all right. Good evening.
Thank you, Walter.
You're welcome. You all have a good evening.
All right, well, good evening. This amendment should be quite a bit less complex, probably a little more technical than the first one you heard, so hopefully we'll move through it fairly quickly, although it's still very important. So there, we'll walk through several different changes to the Neighborhoods Form Base Code and the zoning ordinance that we're proposing, but the primary objective here is addressing affordability requirements for elder care uses specifically in the Neighborhoods Form Base Code. So elder care uses, which in this context include independent living, assisted living, continuing care, and nursing homes, have not always been listed in the zoning ordinance or the Neighborhoods Form Base Code. So in September and November of 2019, the county board approved amendments which inadvertently excluded those elder care uses from being introduced into Appendix A and B, which is the Columbia Pike Commercial and Neighborhoods Form Base Code. So in September of this year, with the Pentagon City Sector Plan amendments that surrounded kind of elder care uses, we did introduce those elder care uses into both of the Neighborhood, the Commercial and Neighborhoods Form Base Code. So they are in there currently, they're now listed under our residential use category. So while the Commercial Form Base Code does not currently have any affordability requirements for development projects, the Neighborhoods Form Base Code does. So it offers both onsite and cash affordability requirements. Onsite units are required for residential development and then cash contribution is required for any kind of commercial development. So, so though we now have those listed, those uses, elder care uses listed in the Neighborhoods Form Base Code, they are listed under that residential use category. So if a developer comes in and wants to propose elder, you know, elder care use, they have to provide onsite caps as part of that development proposal. So what we're continuing to hear from developers and elder care providers is that providing onsite caps is just difficult and it's continued to kind of prove unfeasible for those projects. So while we've heard interest, those projects just haven't been able to pencil. So we kind of, in order to address this, we've identified a series of amendments that we brought to both the Neighborhoods Form Base Code and the zoning ordinance that kind of would solve and address this problem. So one of those would be to create a new elder care use category that would include that independent living, assisted living, continuing care and nursing home uses, both within the Neighborhoods Form Base Code and also within our zoning ordinance. We'd also want to then apply the zoning ordinance parking requirements to the Neighborhoods Form Base Code, revise the Neighborhoods Form Base Code affordability requirements to allow cash contributions to apply to the elder care, this new elder care use category. And then looking at Article 12 of the zoning ordinance to add an elder care use category that would essentially replace the elder care use definition that's currently in the zoning ordinance. So the timeline, we can go over kind of a more detailed timeline at the end, but we're looking at an RTA in November and then the amendments to the county board in December. So as we kind of reviewed these changes again, there were kind of three conclusions that we came to as we were forming kind of the scope of the, the changes that would occur to both, both Neighborhoods Code and the zoning ordinance. So the first of those was just identifying that it was important to differentiate elder care uses from strictly residential uses, just learning more about kind of the specific amenity needs and the complex financing that's involved with those elder care uses. And then having that separate use category and the specific use standards also allow for more a tailored approach to establish requirements such as, in this case, affordability. We also determined that independent living should also be included in this elder care use category. I think it's, it's currently under the residential, what do we call it?
Household living.
Household living category. So, you know, it's not just age-restricted apartments. It also includes, you know, those other living, you know, other things, other than just the residential living quarters, such as those dining amenities, the onsite housekeeping and these other amenities. We're also seeing and hearing from providers that it's often paired with, you know, assisted living facilities, continuing care. So, you know, we do have to kind of account for a variety and, you know, kind of large areas for all of those amenities on sites for all groups. The third item that we determined was that, you know, a cash contribution option is still appropriate for these elder care uses. And just given some of the challenges and difficulties that we've heard, you know, from developers, we think it is necessary to allow, allow cash contributions so that we can realize elder care development projects specifically along the Pike. So the next couple of slides, we'll just walk through kind of high level, some of the changes that we, that have just been described in the Neighborhoods Form Base Code. And then we'll look at some of those specific changes in the zoning ordinance. So here again, we're introducing this new elder care use category. It should include those four different, those four different uses. And then here we have the existing Neighborhoods Form Base Code use table. So again, we do currently have all four of those used listed under the residential use category. Independent living is under that household living section. And then the other three are within the group living section. These will be moved into a new elder care use category. We would also be applying the parking standards that are currently listed in the zoning ordinance. We don't currently have specific uses for some of those elder care uses in the Neighborhoods Form Base Code. And then similarly, we'd be applying new bicycle parking requirements that would actually kind of mirrors the existing hotel bike parking requirements. In the affordability section, again, we'd be adding a new, we'd be listing elder care uses under the cash contribution option. We're also planning to kind of do some cleanup and add civic uses, use categories to this cash contribution option as well. And then here again, we would introduce a new elder care use standards section, which would then eliminate the current elder care uses definition in Arlington County zoning ordinance. We would also be adding this new separate elder care category to several different tables in the zoning ordinance, including the public, residential, multifamily districts and the commercial mixed-use districts. So our next steps, on Monday, we have a meeting with the Commission on Aging. And then we have the Form Base Code, a various working group meeting next Wednesday, followed by Planning Commission, Housing Commission. And then again, RTA in November and December, twenty-fourth meeting. So Matt and I have been working on this for a couple of months now. So happy to answer questions and go back to other slides if that's helpful.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation. It is now with the committee. Any questions or comments?
I'll hold on for a moment. Thanks. So at our hearing last week, we reviewed Sunrise SPRC. And the big discussion amongst the commission was there's no onsite housing. Fairfax provides onsite affordable housing. Alexandria does nursing and your living facilities. Why aren't we doing this? Find out a way in the next two years before Sunrise gets their occupancy permit, get onsite affordable housing. That should be important to our community. And now we're saying like, never mind, you don't have to, just give us the cash contribution. So it seems like a big contrast to what we were at all saying last week. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can I follow up on that? Yeah, so I think that's my biggest question. It sounds like we're having a hard time getting people to convention providing affordable units onsite in general. And I can only imagine the cost of providing assisted affordable units because that's not just the, that's not just your performer and your development budget. Now you're talking about providing all of those services. I like that people have an option to provide a cash contribution, but I don't think we're addressing that problem with this. So, I mean, I'm just, I feel like this is more of a discussion and not like a, I mean, if this was another lovely presentation, very well organized, think I understand everything. This is my only point. I feel like we're not getting any closer to that.
Commissioner Weir?
I'll probably just emphasize a question. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just maybe emphasize a question that came up at, at Planning Commission last week, which is that I think we need more information about how our partner jurisdictions, who we are told, do allow for committed affordable units in elder care facilities, how they do that, right? Because my, where I'm at right now is that I just don't see how with, with the system that Arlington County is on, right? For, for, I don't want to say for want of being on the proper system because I actually think we're on a better system, right? But, but not being on a proper system and, and not having, and, and relying on, on local onsite management for the, the sort of maintenance of affordable units, right? I don't know how we in Arlington, in Arlington disaggregate the affordable unit from all of the related programming. And, and I'm not saying that I think that we don't, I'm not saying I think we give up on the issue, but I'm, but I am echoing some of the, the concerns that were raised about, we'd, we'd like more information on how, on how to go about, on whether, on, on what other jurisdictions do and whether there's a way forward, given the need to disaggregate the, the cost of the unit from the, the not even adjacent, they're not a pertinent program from the, from the fundamentally interlinked programming. Well, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weir. Commissioner Burkey?
Yeah, I'm just gonna associate myself with those comments and that of Commissioners Garen and I think as Peterson before wanting more information. I, as it pertains to, you know, how the contribution works here, I mean, making this modification does sort of make sense. I understand why we would do so. I, I think the point that my fellow commissioners are making, or at least that I'm interested in making is, okay, that makes sense here, but like, what about this fundamental question generally, which is senior housing? We have very little of it in Arlington, almost none, other than Culpeper Garden that's affordable. And so we would like more, more information. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Burkey.
Mr. Meduzic. I'm happy to start the conversation. Part of our research continues to be now and they request advertised to reach out to continue the conversation with adjacent jurisdictions. What we have focused on is an incremental move to make sure that there are no barriers for us throughout the county, but specifically in this area along Columbia Pike, to allow senior care, elder care in those sort of facilities to even have a path to approval. I think in that conversation, if I remember reading some of the meds, that latest proposal that was recently reviewed was maybe one of the first few we've seen since the 1980s. So there's a huge demand for this. And I think what we're recognizing that the ordinance is in a way right now. Some of the initial steps to get us closer to reality and making projects feasible was to first allow the use. We are now going a step further to make sure that the parking ratios are appropriate and reasonable, given what's embedded in that. But a lot of the initial recommendations are driven by our discussion with providers and what we've seen elsewhere, where a lot of these projects tend to have a blended mix of uses. It's not just independent living. It's almost always going to be some of those supportive services. And if either one of those services is not feasible because perhaps they're being isolated to deliver, require an onsite committed affordable unit, it makes a lot of the project unfeasible. And therefore, we still end up in square one where we can't have that project forward. So it is a feasibility challenge. I think what we're starting to hear is that maybe 1% to 2% of units might even have a chance at being delivered as affordable. But that's nowhere near what the multifamily requirement is in the Neighborhoods Form Base Code for affordability on site. So there is a significant gap, as you mentioned, the costs that go into those services, really distinguish elder care from multifamily. And I think in recognition of that and to ensure that we at least have a path for these projects to go forward, we are considering the cash contribution path now as we continue these conversations and see if there are other opportunities. But to be perfectly honest, I don't see how that can happen without significant subsidies, either offered by the county or state, because just how high these costs are.
Mr. Peterson?
So I can relate or understand the cost being really high for the assisted living. Where I'm more skeptical is with independent living. And I think that's an area where we're possibly missing a chance to have the onsite affordable housing. I know there are some services that are offered with independent living, but it's not going to be anywhere near how much is offered if you are needing memory care or something along those lines. And so I think if it's going to be a mixed-use facility of independent living that then transitions eventually to higher need, the affordable housing could maybe start off in the independent section. I mean, I guess that would be operative then when you need more services. They said, sorry, you can't, you have to leave the building. That would be unfortunate, but I'm just trying to, I don't want to like, if there's a building that's just independent living with not too many units in it, and so it would be like one or two is required onsite, I'm sad to give that up so easily.
Can I have a quick follow-up on that? Can we have a designation of independent living? If I understand this correctly, that's not just elderly, right? That's folks that have a difficult time living on their own, they're differently able. Or does that include that? Or am I, are we strictly speaking about elder?
Let me, let me recharge the memory banks a little bit. And I have been in one meeting with a provider where, you know, they've made overtures of the, things have changed now because of the pandemic. I don't know how they didn't elaborate. So caveat that some of the information may be somewhat dated. But from some of the work that myself and others at staff on, done previously on this, this topic, approximately somewhere in around 70% of the independent living residents still drive and still have cars. So there, so there, so there isn't, you know, they don't necessarily need the same help with the activities of daily living. In most instances, need 0% help with bathing, feeding, you know, dressing, those sorts of things. The independent living units and the independent living experience is going to be fairly similar to an apartment with, with access to all the first floor amenities, the hairstylist, the theater, the art studio, the, the one plus bistros onsite. That's all included in the, in, in the annual, the, the price that's being paid, along with the landscaping, some housekeeping, I believe, is involved with independent living as well. The things that you haven't heard me talk about are the, the services that the commission, clearly has done their homework on and has heard about with Sunrise and others that, you know, help with, with mobility, help with medicine management and other care that comes with those activities of daily living. So I hope that, I hope that clips note version helps out a little bit, Commissioner Starling.
Did that, did that answer your, your question, Commissioner Peterson? Or did you get the reaction?
That's really what, what is independent living? And it's.
That was sort of my follow-up question, but Commissioner Peterson had a comment about, is there a, like, instead of just cash payment, if there's sort of a middle lane for independent living, that then that's onsite? Did I capture that correctly?
Yes, yeah. So that if it's just an independent living building, then the lower parking is fine. I like that. But maybe we do still require onsite affordable housing.
We can certainly get back to on the scenario where it is solely 100% independent living facility. What does that mean in terms of the feasibility of ensuring that some onsite units are delivered? One of the elements in that scenario here is that unlike the rest of the county where we have additional density to offer in exchange, and this would be one way of earning that, there is no, nothing to offer. This is basically the cost of doing business on Columbia Pike. And a lot of these projects tend to be the wood-framed six-story buildings that we see all in that corridor. With some exceptions, it's not impossible to have concrete buildings and some sites can go up to 12 stories even. But predominantly, that's kind of the product that we're looking to target and that we've seen expressed interest in. And in that scenario, that further informs how far we can push, I think, the envelope beyond the point at which there is no interest in providing that use. But that's something we can certainly follow up on in time for the RTA.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioner Garen?
So I was just looking at Culpeper Gardens because I've visited there and chatted with them about the financial structure over the past. And they have for independent living, not assisted, they have a dining service so you can give meals. They have housekeeping, they have maintenance support for chores, home management. So I think they have like money management and safety and security. And then I know, I think that you can also have small pets and a vet comes to them. And I think they also have some basic like health things that come to the facility. I think they also have some basic like health things that come to the facility, and you don't need to be an assistant for that. So I think that's what this says for independent. I have a question, though. Does the county, and I think this is a much bigger conversation, I realize I'm opening this door, but given the board and the PC and sort of general support right now for more housing options, including more affordable and for special needs populations, is there a reason we don't apply for federal funds for senior housing? I mean, have we maxed out what we can get here in the county?
I don't have an answer to that question, unfortunately, Commissioner Weir.
Okay. Because that might be the sort of thing that if a developer wanted to take that out in partnership with one of our affordable housing providers, they might be able to make this happen. I mean, you know, there are some things that you need to have different for the units for people who may need assistance with living, you know, wider doors and emergency poles and, you know, we could all get a tour of our Culpeper Gardens. They're very generous and wanting to show what they're doing there. And I did used to do affordable housing finance. It is super, super expensive to provide that sort of deep subsidy to very low-income folks who need the services, but it is possible. People do provide that. And it might be nice for the commission to get a primer on how that works, including the sources available trust for funding.
I know for, and allow us to confirm this figure in the interim, it would be a call to our colleagues over in DHS, but I know with Culpeper Garden is a good example and has been a longtime partner, Arlington County has been a longtime partner with them. The subsidy that Mr. Matuszak mentioned would be essential to provide that, the county takes, puts that bill to the tune of, at least in 2019, it was over $600,000 a year. I have to think that it's higher now in 2023. Let us, let us come back to confirm that number.
No, we can kind of get them a big loan to renovate, and I think they also have vouchers, the person-based assistance that goes with affordable housing, and that's from the federal government, but I don't know if we could get more as a population goes up.
And I think this is a subsidy, I'll look, perhaps on top of what you're describing, but we'll give those numbers for you.
Yeah.
Great. Anything else? I think that's it. I think we have everything. We don't have any public speakers that I can see. Just Commissioner Burkey and Commissioner Weir, who are joining us virtually right now. All right. I think, do we want to do any wrap-up comments or anything, or we're good?
We're good.
Okay. Thank you very much, staff. Thanks, everyone that came to the meeting. Thank you, commissioners that came and joined us online, and we will see you, we have a SOCO meeting scheduled, you know, right? We're still.
It's on the schedule. I don't know what the topics are. I'll stop ahead.
Well, stay tuned to this, that channel, and we'll have something. I'm going to do, Commissioner Burkey, shush you both. I got shushed last, well, last time. I'm just wrapping up. Did you want to say anything before we wrap up here?
No, no, I still need to ask a question, and I.
No.
It was my fault.
Is that like, perhaps we can share that question?
No, just asking about Culpeper Garden. That's all.
Actually, I'm intrigued by the interview. All right, with that, thanks so much, everyone, for coming. I think we will wrap it up and have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.